Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Hi, it is 6:03, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. This is a meeting on the Rockingham Select Board. We are located in the Town Lower Theater in the Town Hall. There is a Zoom link available and a phone link also. So that being said, the call was made to order. And the first item to take here is to approve the minutes of October 4th, which are in your packet. I'll take a motion.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 4th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's made in second. Any additions, corrections, omissions, deletions, et cetera? I have one. For a stage discussion for recycling center. Said over 409 signatures from Rockingham. Well, only half of them were from Rockingham, if I remember correctly. There were 200 from Westminster.
Oh, really? You went through that?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Because he said, I don't think there were any.
No, he had two separate packages.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So anyway, just a matter of order.
Well, yeah, that needs to be good.
Other than that, that's why I said that Westminster signatures don't carry much weight because they don't, you know, they don't pay anything for the.
So how many signatures were from that?
209.
209.
Yeah, they're total of 409.
But don't Westminster residents pay a fee as a recycling city?
They have to pay an access fee, yeah.
Okay, so they've got some scale to game.
Well, the access fee, you've got to understand, it just allows people to come in and use the facility. They have roadside pickup.
I know.
So they get rid of their trash on roadside pickup, the recyclables also, if they sort of desire it. If they want to come in here, then they have to pay their, you know, the access fee to come in. They have to pay their rubbish. And the only thing that pickup won't take is customers who've been very used to all the heavy goods stuff. So they have to come nuts. So, and we have to pay for getting rid of it, number one. We get a little bit back on some of the metal we recycle. We have to pay for refrigerators and air conditioners. We have to take all the freon and stuff out of it. So that, they can't go until that's done. We have to have 36 refrigerators or items to go back before that's going to be emptied. So that's why you see a pile of stuff sitting there.
Right.
So, but yeah, but all other people that come in that are not residents of the town have to pay that same access fee. Athens, Craftland. And one interesting one, Saturday, people were pickup. They pick up trash on foreclosing houses, they clean them out. These guys were from Rockland. They brought a trail load of trash from Rockland. So I asked them, oh, why are you bringing it here? And they said, well, you're the only one open. Well, Rockland's open Saturday. Springfield's open Saturday. All these other offices are open, I think, since sufficient. They refuse to take their materials and they end up coming here. And they're actively out of Clairemont, I believe.
Or we're cheaper.
Make a difference, but this is what goes on down there, you know. But anyway, we're getting off the public, so we go on and on. But anyway, motion's made in second to approve the minutes of October 4th. Although, if anyone would say aye.
Aye.
Although the polls may, or should have accepted.
I have an aye, Peter.
Oh, so there you go, sorry. I thought you weren't going to be on there, but it's okay.
I'm here. I may drop off, the connection's not the greatest.
Sleepover there, we know it's probably early. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require gratification at future meetings. We have one, we will have a short item under executive section for a legal matter that came up today. Not as, there will be no announcements after we get down, just a discussion for the board. Scott has requested that. Anyone else have any? You haven't seen none? Public comment on items not on the agenda, three minutes per person.
I see one thing. We have a little bit of the issue on Canal Street with the closure of street for the construction of the Windsor Garage Project. People come down the street and it's a one-way street, of course, so they get to the bottom, they get to the waypoint center or train station. They can't figure out how to get back out. Because there's only signs that say road closed. There's no signs to say where to go. So residents have been thinking about, a lot of people just getting confused and thinking the only way to get back out is to go the wrong way, up the one-way street.
Back up.
Back up. Really?
So, yeah, we have, I actually watched down there one afternoon and we had a lot of cars doing that.
Yeah, I can see how you would get very confused because you wouldn't realize that you could go past the train station and be all around, unless you know.
Well, don't they, don't they have a close sign right there?
They have a close sign, but they don't direct anybody where else to go.
It needs a detour sign.
They need four signs. I did send a letter to the director of the housing trust and they're going to pass it along to their site manager. So that was about, about 10 days ago.
Yeah, we don't want anybody trying to come up that way. That's too narrow, anyway, going down. They're going to be trying to back up the other way.
Backing out, yeah, oh my gosh.
Okay, see, others will go to the manager and report.
Let's hand out, let me just grab one and pass this along. So you can believe it, we have to start talking about budgets. This is a, just for the board's information, schedule of topics and dates so that we can start to calendar for different presentations, as well as just the process of going through the various expenditures and revenues and major program areas and adopting a budget. And hopefully in the articles that you might want to accompany that in early January so that you're well in advance for all the notification requirements for town meeting. Probably the things to take a look at are, we are going to have an audit report on the 15th of November, so we should have a fully complete audit available for the town report. I know that's going to complain over the last few years with some of the timeliness of that. So once that presentation is done, we should be able to have it completed and then have it available for reproduction and inclusion in the town report. Then you can also see the various large funds, as well as just some of the other more pressing areas of review. If we move to add times or add additional presentations, we will, but this just gives you an idea of the schedule so far.
The fire department, is there, there's a fire department committee that's working.
Fire committee, yes.
Will you be making the recommendations to the board?
They are, yeah. We talked about it, we've been on the meeting on the 14th of November, that everybody's got their homework due. So hopefully they'll complete it and be able to go along from there. Those recommendations coming along.
And there'll probably be some sort of discussion of some of that at the joint board and tribe board meeting again in November, with the idea that if there was going to be some budgetary impacts, it would then come to this board in December for discussion. So that's sort of the, you know, the process. And I'll, Sue, I'll send you a electronic copy. I know you can't grab anything, so I'll get that out to you as well.
All right, thanks.
That's it. All right, let's move on from the agenda. First item is Mr. Grinold from BDCC for a presentation. There is a letter of information in your packet. What do you mean, it's up there? Yeah, because you've read that, Jared, so I'll clear.
And my colleague Laura Sivilia, who's on Zoom as well, just turned. She's, she'll be speaking a bit about the EDD process. So before we get into the details, hello, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's great to be here in person. It's been a while since we've been able to do this here. These updates are important for us as we go around and meet with select boards, just communicating the work that we've been doing around the region over the course of the year. You know, it's a real pleasure to be here, working with a community that really gets the economic development needs of the town and the region. Rockingham has been a longtime supporter of Sevens and the work that we do. And then most recently, you know, really seeing the great work that you folks are leading along with Scott and Gary. You know, it's really, it's a leveraging of the resources so that it's really bringing a lot more impact than if it's just us trying to do work in some communities, some of the USDA funded programming through the Southern Vermont Economy Project. Bringing a lot of awareness and training to communities. But you folks are taking that up with action that really is unparalleled. So kudos to everyone. I'm going to keep my comments brief, you know, you, as a body in a municipality, you know us and our work. I want to make sure I reserve any time for questions. You've received a letter requesting funding again for the coming year. It's hard to believe it was that budget time already. Not really here to speak at length to that request, but happy to do so. But instead, just talk a bit about the work that we do. The SEDS document you have, I just handed out. Reminder of the SEDS, that's a comprehensive economic development strategy. That's a federal process that the region has implemented to set these strategies that everyone is now across the region going out and implementing. So that's the work that Sevens leads, is that strategic planning. And then BDCC, and Sevens has no employees. Instead, it contracts with BDCC to implement its strategic priorities. So that's that relationship that we have with Sevens. So we're here tonight to give you an update, update and be able to answer any questions. And then my colleague Laura Sivilia, who's on Zoom, is going to speak a bit more in depth on the SEDS and EDD. I don't know if you want to open it's questions, or have Laura go first?
I'm going to have Laura give her spiel and then we'll beat on the votes here after that.
Thank you, thank you very much. And Adam, you passed out the SEDS. So in addition, this year, to updates about our programs and what the investment that you have been making regionally is providing, we are coming out to talk about the next evolution of the SEDS. And that is the formation of an Economic Development District. It's actually a designation that the federal government bestows upon a region. A really brief, hopefully brief, overcap, certainly give me the hook if I go on too long. But in 2015, the legislature designated Wyndham and Bennington Counties as the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone. That is a region that had special economic development needs, in particular, looking at significant population loss and a long-term economic slide. With that designation, the federal government invited us to, to create a SEDS for the zone, so for Wyndham and Bennington County. You'll recall the first SEDS was for Wyndham County. And those are our five-year planning documents. The second, which was completed in 2019, that's the document you have in front of you, was for the whole zone. Subsequently, the Economic Development Administration, which is an entity within the U.S. Department of Commerce, has invited us to apply to become an Economic Development District. Again, that's a designation. And what we are seeking is a letter of support from the town of Rockingham for that designation. And we have sent you a letter about that designation process. I'm also happy to provide you with a draft, a letter or draft language, if necessary. Becoming an Economic Development District has benefits for the entire zone. There are some minimal funding that comes from the federal government on an annual basis, not really enough even for a single staff person, but some funding that would be used to help implement, further help implement the SEDS. But in addition, we know that the EDA likes to have these areas where they know that there's a publicly created plan that folks have thought about more formally in an Economic Development District, how they will work together. And that reduces the risk for taxpayers and others about investments. And so when we're looking at projects that are in an Economic Development District or part of a SEDS, the risk of investment is lower because we know that the development of both that SEDS and Economic Development District have been part of a public process. So in order to seek that designation, there are a number of different supports that we need, including the majority of the municipalities in the zone. We've received a number of letters so far. I'm going to be going to Dorset virtually, just after I leave your meeting, talking with them about this as well. And we also need to seek the support from both our state and our regional partners, our economic partners within the region. So I'll leave it there. I think that's probably enough for questions.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Either Adam or Laura.
I'll just give a quick comment to the board. We've been working with Adam on a variety of projects. I know the board's been supportive of some of our stormwater work, supporting our business in industrial park and some of our larger businesses. And all of these things are really, Adam's been a great partner in all of these. And, you know, I know that I appreciate all the effort and the staff that he provides to Gary and I when we're dealing with some of these really complex and multi-agency kinds of issues. They're a great partner to help us sort of reach the right people, get to the right decision makers. And ultimately, they've been tremendously helpful to us in getting some of these larger grants and big projects that we've been talking about at this board level. So on our personal level, we really appreciate all their efforts. And, you know, they're a huge partner for us to really sort of help us move forward.
Right. If I'm reading this correctly, zoning changes will be a key part of improving desirability as a place to live and a place to have a business. How do you guys intersect with our zoning change? You work with Chuck, obviously, but could you describe a little bit more?
Sure, yeah. We don't ever go into community and say, well, I'm sure there should be that. What we do is bring awareness to best practices that are happening across the region, across state, across the country, for you to consider. And if you need some more data, we try to help bring data for you to understand what that might look like in your community. But it's, our process is really to bring technical assistance to help implement that deserved line of.
So you can tell us that this zoning change X worked in town Y, and therefore it might work here, is that?
Yeah, I think that's a good description. And then, you know, through some of the Southern Vermont Economy Project program, we've worked with the town, with Betsy and Gary on a lot of educational opportunities for individuals and planning members to participate.
That kind of goes back to the town plan. In this town plan that's ever done, they can make recommendations on how to deal with zoning and stuff like that. And then from that, then they can change the zoning. You have to have a reason to change the zoning. If the town plan is updated and is recommending these various changes, there's your, there's your way into that.
And then we go to, we also go to zoning changes, right? Select Board?
Yeah, also on town plan. Yeah, I think, you know, an example might be if community required parking for residential units. And, yeah, so in some communities, they've said, you know, we want more residential units, we're going to take away that parking requirement and let the municipal parking provide the parking for that unit. Some communities that work, some of it's not. So it's not, you can't say, well, you should do parking to get more density. Some communities, it just won't work.
Laura, the, this new Economic Development District, is that going to, how's that going to be funded? Are we, are you guys going to knock it out with a cup in hand for funding? Or is that all part of that SEDS budget that comes out of that?
I didn't quite get, get the whole question.
I'll take it, Laura. So it was funding for the EDD. So the district exists in the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone that the Vermont State Legislature created. So that's, that exists, that designation. This is another designation from the federal government recognizing that. And so when you are recognized as a district, funding comes from the federal government to help implement and plan for your SEDS and your strategies. So there are other EDD districts in Vermont. North of us, there's a three-county district. Further up to northwest, there's a district. And in the northeast, there's a district. So this is just another way in which to bring more resources to the region, not extract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question. Does anybody want them to send us a draft letter to support?
I can withdraw.
I mean, Scott's doing one, but I may not.
Scott, you can send it around to us.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a quick example of how the pieces fit together. So in the zoning and planning example, so Southern Vermont Economy Project, run by BDCC, brought the Incremental Development Alliance to talk to folks here, to talk to you, and funded consultants to spend a year with the community, doing some research, training community members. And so there was a planning commission member on it, a village trustee member on it, a select board member participating. And then bringing that education back to the planning commission as they do in the town plan, as Bunny was saying, so those principles get into the town plan and then bringing the education here. So that group of community members is now becoming self-sufficient and brought the VHFA to the select board to provide that data and help back up plans that they're making. So, you know, that all starts with that education and support for economic development in our region and ties in to, you know, zoning, planning commission, development work, community, rising up the knowledge and skills of all community members in that.
So Gary, at the joint meeting, we had a report by the VHF about housing?
Yes, that's the one I'm referring to.
Okay, that involved?
So that was brought by the group that came out of the training, the technical assistance that started with SVEP, the BDCC. So as the year-long program ended, the way the group carried forward, right, so they finished the technical assistance and then they'll say, okay, so now you're done. They say, okay, so what are you going to do from here? So our program is over now. And they came up with an action plan developing the Ridwick Group. And that joint board meeting is an example of their work carrying on. And they worked with the planning commission as well.
That's very helpful. I didn't understand those connections.
Typical ball dance in the soup, yeah.
It's, it's an evolution, you know?
Yeah.
Nothing builds on another.
Okay, is there anything else that anyone will clarify on or questions? Should I go off easy?
Okay, all right.
All right, Laura, we'll let you go to Dan Dorset now. How's that?
That's great. And you have a draft letter that will be in your mailbox in about 60 seconds. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Laura.
All right, thanks, Laura. It's part two, resolution in support of 2023 bylaw modernization grant application. There's some information in your packet. Is this going to require some signatures and acts in there too?
Yeah, there's a resolution here, as well as, as Peter said, maybe you want us to sign.
Right.
If you adopt the resolution and bring this forward, this is again, another piece of our ongoing work that comes out of other work. And here, the goal is to try to get some technical assistance to help us with some of the challenges that we're running into with creating more market-based housing, looking at other options for home business, childcare, and also then trying to also promote other types of zoning that might be beneficial to the town. So all of these recommendations or all of this work will come back to this board at some point for your consideration. And ultimately, if they look like they are good changes, then ultimately, those will come back for your adoption. And then it'll, it'll be another tool to help us with redevelopment, supporting our neighborhoods and looking at other opportunities right now that are a little bit stifled with some of our zoning and the formatting of our current zoning. So it's a pretty comprehensive process. It's going to take a lot of staff time. I know Gary's been heavily involved, Chuck's going to be heavily involved. It'll come back to planning commission and ultimately this board as well. So there's work to be done, but I think it's work that's going to be beneficial to the community. And the grant certainly helps us leverage the additional staff time because it's just falling on, you know, staff shoulders. We just don't have the bandwidth to get this, to get this project back to you in time and manner.
So you're going to send this out to the regional, behalf of the region commission?
I believe the way this is going to go is ultimately, I believe Gary will have to do RFPs, right? The consultants?
Yes, although I think they do have some accommodation for working with the regional planning commission. I'm not sure if that's managing, managing this one. And, yeah, who will be following, whatever procurement rules go along with this particular grant.
The immediate impacts, just for the board's consideration, is what, you know, beside the staff time, is the, there is some town funds in this that match. It's $2,700 of the $27,000.
So what we have to approve tonight is the resolution and the allocation of $2,700, right?
Yeah, well, the resolution includes that. We're just making a motion that there is a, you know, 10% back. So someone wants to make a motion to adopt the manual municipal resolution for bylaw modernization?
I don't know, so we adopt the FY23 municipal resolution for bylaw modernization.
Do you have a second?
I see.
Any further discussion, questions? There is a cash match of $2,700, 10% of the total of $27,000. For clarification. No questions to be asked? I would ask for a vote. Although, if they're in the resolution, would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Although the polls may? Motion, Gary.
I just need Peter for you to sign on behalf of us.
May.
Peter, one question. With Saxons River, do we, the select board, make the decisions on Saxons River zoning orders and Saxons River trustees? Where do they make the zoning decision?
So is it okay if I take that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the planning commission has Saxons River residents on that board, and they provide input to the town plan, including details about development in Saxons River. And then that leads to the input in the zoning bylaws, as well as public meetings that will be held Saxons River, not in Bellas Falls, about residents. So part of the planning grant provides staff to invite, plan, and hold public meetings to make sure there's good engagement and not dependent on how much staff time can you put into getting people and running a public meeting. And also the language, there might be things we want in the town plan, and because we're not attorneys or bylaw attorneys, the language could have unintended consequences. So some of the funds also go to zoning bylaw attorneys that, where the language could get what we want in there, causing unintended consequences. that, where the language gets what we want in there, causing unintended consequences, that sort of thing. But so certainly, on a couple of levels, Saxon's River, one is members on the planning commission that are feeding both the, the town plan that directs the development for the zoning, and then the zoning bylaws themselves to achieve the development in the town plan. And then the, the public engagement around the zoning invites a final. So there's, there's three opportunities where, you know, each, each area of town, each resident is having their input into, so for Saxon's River.
Yeah. You would be the real example, for example, between the planning, the 35, 37 Main Street, that we got that grant for, and the commission you feed them?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, if you've gone to, just voted, let's move on to item three, which is the intent to bargain and appointments for bargaining team members. There is a letter in the packet, the marksmen's there too. This is for union negotiations. At that time, we have to sit down and fight the union. So we need to nominate someone from this board.
So remember, we had this on for your consideration at the joint board, and then we lost Mr. Masuko, so we had to pull
Right.
that particular item, and now this is the successor to that item. And we'd speak with Josh Thern, and he is available and interested in participating on the legal end. So now it's a question of the board deciding, do they'd like to have a management team? And then ultimately, if not, we'll contact the union about our intent to bargain.
Somebody from the select board has to be on this team?
Yeah. I'm all told from the village.
Okay, Peter, I think your, your knowledge, I'm just saying.
I, I, I brought some beer.
Your, your knowledge of the employees, the history. Your knowledge of the project, for example, so, so I, I think you'd be the ideal person.
Well, I've done it the last couple of years, so I guess, you know, it's not a surprise that I'm gonna be nominated. Plus I have all the packet, along with the attorney, so.
Unless you wanna do it live, then?
Oh, come on, that's a chance, tricked boxing gloves on. It's really not that bad.
I can nominate Peter Golick.
I'll second that nomination.
Any further nominations by chance?
I'm such a blackbeard, it's true.
So you wanna do it?
Go far in here.
Oh, come on, Sue. You can do it all night.
Rejected from overseas.
It's hard to do from 10,000 miles away.
Yeah, but they can't get you from over there. They can't reach you. When you sit at the table, it's a whole different. Okay. Alright, motion's been made to nominate Peter Golick as the liaison for the union negotiations. So all those in favor of that motion would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those nay? We'll fill in the, the blanks.
Fill in the blanks and?
Yeah. Alright, and of course, Scott, Scott's also in there.
Right.
So we'll see who the village nominates. Alright, item four, so Gary's been waiting all evening with David Bressler, approve the exercise of TLR lease options and presentation along with Mr. Bonto over there. You guys, you guys have the floor?
Send out copies, I know we sent electronic copies. I didn't know if everybody got a chance to prove it out, if not, enough of the copy.
As I've been told, this is an extension of the current agreement we have with them, anyway.
Gary can fill in some of the blanks.
Yeah, so they can, there was the spiel, we can ask them questions or whatever. No, probably not, but it's either we take it back, or we give it to them, or let them continue.
We're at a place, we have to do something because we're applying for a grant. And the grant has a timeline, and the timeline says, it's close against the end of November. So that means if we're, wanna take the option, if you're gonna give us the option. And there are 30 days that's required for the transfer of, you know, property in town, for you to warrant. So we're at that place now, but it's sort of, of course, it's not almost too late. It's not too late, but it's almost getting late. And so we're here to ask if we can exercise the option. The letter states how, how we've been complying with the terms. And we've done a pretty good job following up with the things we need to do. And that's it.
The, the part that Dave's referring to is the piece that's not in your packet. So, you know, everything else is in your packet that describes, you know, the, the lease that has the action plan. And you can see SVG has followed through all the items on the action plan up through the EPA grant. And so what Dave was referring to is that the EPA grant is due on November 22nd. And in order to accentuate the option, and we did speak with Steve Ankuda about this, that the, the property has to be noticed for 30 days and before closing. And so for the ownership to close on November 22nd, we would wanna, you know, if we come out of this meeting with you concurring to, to move ahead, then we would want to close in like probably November 21st. So we would work on noticing it straight away.
So this is a process that started, what, two years ago?
Yeah. So this particular one did, we were doing this lease along with moving the paper machine. Because remember, we made some adjustments.
Right. I know that's one of my follow-ups, is that this one doesn't say that we revert back to town if the whole project goes in the can, so.
Yeah.
So just that, some language might wanna be added to that area there on second page, exhibit eight. January, December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd.
How do we look at that?
So SAG, I, I've been saving company paper machine from the grant, the outfit to TLR, and backed by Wyman Flint, that's all it said, from time to time. The ownership of the, 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 the town for, 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 for.
Okay, well.
I remember that's the only thing we added to the last one.
Yeah.
Alright, the, 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 the intent was to, to have some historical, historical.
Yes, yeah, and that was added in what went to Steve Ankuda. So I might have sent the wrong, an older version in the packet. And so it actually, the, the process, it started in 2018. And the, the one two years ago was a renewal of a previous agreement with a new action time. So I think the Bellas Falls Historical Society had started it in 2016, maybe. So yeah, it's been, it's been an ongoing process. I think the town applied for a Community Development Block Grant for, to sub-grant to SVG to stabilize some of the buildings. That's the part that started four, uh, four years ago. So Historical Society was six years ago. And, and that, that grant was not awarded from the block grant people. They very rarely award slum and blight grants. They did for Robertson Paper, but it's, it's a rare and very little portion of their budget that's allocated to that. This grant, however, is, you can see in the action items where we get to a cleanup grant for the TLR buildings. And so if the assessment shows that there's not too high a level of PCBs, and it can be cleaned up, then the buildings will be restored. If they show there's too many PCBs in the building themselves, then the same, so the, the portion of the building that's in the field that had to get removed in 2002, it's because it was filled with PCBs as well as the viable asbestos. So at any rate, this EPA grant will provide whichever one it is, the cleanup to redevelop the buildings, or if there's too high levels of PCBs, the cleanup to do a removal action like Robertson Paper. Depends on the contamination. And so for this grant, the, the cleanup grants do require ownership to, to file the application.
So which buildings will be affected for, if the, you know, the PCBs are, is that the Wyman Flint building only, or?
Nope, this is the, the TLR buildings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The Wyman Flint and the Gris Mill will, will get assessment grants, which do not require ownership. So if the Historical Society decides at their annual meeting that they want to be included in this application, they can, SVG can include them without ownership. It's the cleanup grants that require ownership.
Yeah, we're at the fork of the road with the TLR. We have to come to the point, but we have to know what to do.
Right, well, they, they did a lot of studies on the TLR.
Yeah.
You have all that, right?
Yes.
Several thousand of them of this.
They must have done some environmental testing at that time because there was a considerable amount of cleanup that happened with the.
We're still not sure about the PCBs at certain locations.
Yeah, so the, the testing was done in that area of the paper machines between the, the, the existing TLR, the portions of TLR building that are left, the ones with the silhouettes in the windows. Between those buildings and Wyman Flint was a huge building contiguous with both buildings that was full of PCBs, too much to ever be remediated. And so the EPA contributed a million dollars in what they call an emergency removal action. They did not think that there were too many PCBs in the other buildings. That's why they, that's why they only took out the other portion.
Well, this will determine whether or not the building stands or goes. And it's time to find out.
Yeah. Cool.
Yeah.
The age time. The paper, the paper machine is, how big is that?
Well, so the, the, the portions of it that are there, the cylinders are pretty big, the frames that hold them up. You can see them between the TLR and the Wyman Flint in the field there is where the paper machine is right now. It was, two years ago, was moved there from the gravel pit.
That's, you know, where, you know, when you park there behind the mistmill?
Yep.
There's quarter potty. It's right behind the quarter potty.
Alright.
That's gigantic, gigantic roller.
It's the origin of all wood pulp is paper. It's, it's the granddaddy of a mall.
Right.
All paper, just everything with, with chip. Starting with that.
Yeah, so that, that was the first machine, that, that model, that used wood pulp instead of rags. And it's what, what caused, enabled International Paper to have 4,000 employees here.
You know, a town that only had 3,000 at the time. Well, they had more, more jobs and people in the town.
And the Connecticut River Heritage Plant Study has two options for things like the, like the paper, like that paper machine. So the, the Historical Society's river, what's it, scenic historic park, park, the Bellas Falls Historic Park and Trail System, which is part of that Connecticut River Heritage Plant. And, and the design, things like having the big stone wheels and railroad wheels be out. So the, with things like the paper machines, they suggested two options. The, the same thing is those wheels that have the interpretive displays along the trail, or to have them assembled in one of the buildings, as it was assembled.
Who owns those rollers? I, I thought we took ownership of, of those big rollers. Did you own them, or?
Town owned. Yeah, they're, they're town-owned.
The town owns them. All I know is Chuck, Chuck called me up and said, you wanna get rid of these? The Historical Society want them. And, and I said, yeah, we'll take them. So I thought they belonged to us, but they don't.
That, that's hard to mention, if, if, if nothing happens down there, then the town still retains ownership. Otherwise, they can just, with their own, get rid of it.
Yeah, so the.
Junk, and that's not being towns.
Yeah, so the Historical Society, its board meeting determined that it, it didn't want the paper machines and wanted to sell the Wyman Flint to SVG.
Oh, so they went with the Wyman Flint, is that what it was?
To, for the Historical Society to focus on the Adams Grist Mill, which has been.
I'm not saying that, that I want them, right?
How beauty is an eye to the holder. Now you're a relative.
I was trying to tell Chuck, no, we don't want them, but then everybody on the board said, oh, we want them, so.
But I mean, if you, if you talk to Kathy, like this project, the Cultural River Heritage Center is, and has been a collaboration with SVG and Historical Society since 2016.
Since the very beginning, yeah.
Bottom line is, we'd like to continue and go forward and keep our, our steps. And we'd like, this is a step we have to meet. So, any further questions?
I do. Does SVG really have the capacity to take this project on and continue with it? It's my concern. What, what I don't want to have happen is to transfer the property and it further deteriorates and then comes back to the town when it's even more drought condition. Project doesn't happen.
I speak to that, our track record from 2010 is all about vision and pluck and try and pull commi, community together, using things. And we've had a pretty good run. I expect that we have insurance on it. And I don't think the town would be any worse off if, if for some reason it hadn't been leveled. We're gonna try to continue on the work that we're doing.
But the town has never, never articulated any interest in putting any money into it.
No, but I think without a clear plan of how to proceed, the best thing as far as keeping the building standing would be just try to patch the roof, kind of let them sit for a few years until somebody is ready to really take it on. Right? If SVG thinks that they are prepared for sure to do that, then that's good. But what if, what if that were put out? Would, would a private developer be eligible for the same EPA funding that a?
Yeah, so those, those are all really good questions. Dutch Walsh, when he was Development Director, put it out to private developers who came and took a, a look at it in 2014, I think, when it was in a little better shape and, and no one would, would touch it. It's a, it's a total liability. And local development corporations, one of their specific purposes, so why we have in support BFADC and SVG is they're, they're organized under the Economic Development Authority statutes. For, it's called Subchapter III, it's a local development corp. And they have access to Vita Funds, which is what they use to create the commercial kitchen, which is active and employs, I know, varies between eight and 10 people today. And was the same thing, was a building that had to be gutted and renovated, had no roof and was filling up with snow at one point. So that in 2011 to 2013, SVG went through that with, with that building. And the, the local development corp designation provides things like this stuff. So this EPA grant is how a lot of these projects get done. So that's how BFADC was able to create a developable field at Robertson Paper. It's a little more expensive to do the removal action, which is why if the, if, as we suspect from the previous studies that Bonnie was alluding to, that the PCBs are not too dense, then the, the EPA grant will be able to remediate the building, create the structural improvements. So I, I think like the alternative plan that you were describing, the, the, the problem with that is that the canal wall, the roof, the beams are all deteriorating. And just stopping water from coming in the roof will not stop. Things like the, the bottom of the canal wall is, is sliding in. So that last vestige of the canal wall that still has the eye bolts from tying up barges on would be lost. The EPA funds, these grants allow you to do some remediation. They allow you to stabilize the building. And it's getting to the point where we'll guarantee that they have to be demolished if we don't act on it. We sort of have been there for a few years, and we're fortunate it hasn't gone yet. And right now, the, the EPA, so one of the reasons that, one of the reasons that, that now is really the time to do it is that these programs have been well-funded. And the, the important thing to do is to get the funds obligated for the projects before there's a potential of, of, of clawbacks from an administration that doesn't want to see this type of investment in infrastructure. So the, the Brownfields folks, they had, oh boy, what was the? They had a secretary, Assistant Secretary of Transportation, one from housing and one from the EPA, that, that spoke to the funding the EPA had right now. And they doubled. And they doubled, they doubled the limits of the grants. So in the past, S V G would only have been able to access two hundred fifty thousand dollars in a year for a project. The changes they made, the and and it's funny because they they came to speak at this conference like the. Two days after the Inflation Reduction Act was passed. And so they only just had these numbers. They came and said, okay, so so it passed, we have this money. These are the new limits for access. There's this multi-purpose grant, which which will be a minimum of one million dollars, a maximum of two million dollars. There will be no match. So the the whole formula is flipped upside down right now with access to enough funds. For for example, B F A D C had to use five different grants in order to get the Robbie Paper, the one building done. This current program allows S V G to work on three buildings. It has the limits that allow the full work to get done, whether it's a removal action because of PCBs or a cleanup. Because the PCBs are okay. Allows the three buildings. It doesn't require the match money. So you know, a lot of the complications with Robertson Paper were matched by different grants. Trying to piece together different, you know, each each program has its own rules. So we're really, really, really in such a. The the federal funding scenario is such a sweet spot right now. That it would be, personal opinion, it would be foolish of us not to take advantage of the opportunity we have. To actually save the these buildings.
I felt like you when I first saw it. Why don't we just put some MUFON on it and just wait and see what happens? But that was a few years ago and already things are starting to get worse.
And either it's coming down or it's coming to get repaired.
Yeah, oh, I I I understand buildings. That's something I do understand, but yeah. Just. Hang in there, Gary. Don't just die on us from. Overwork.
Yeah, eat your spinach, man.
Yeah, so the, you know, the the town actually. Has a lot of support right now. Scott really encourages using other folks where possible. You know, like in the past with other projects, with the block grants, I've done the NEPA process, which is all kinds of time. It's not, I'm no expert in that type of stuff. And Scott was, it's, you know, it's, we we hired V H B who's doing a great job with that for the train station. I I think we are getting smarter around other other resources and not trying to have staff to do everything. And that makes a big difference. The work that BIFTA has. Become capable of over the last two years with increasing capacity and legwork and volunteers and. And skills and knowledge with a committed board as well. That takes a huge piece of it. So between BIFTA, S V G and B F A D C Board providing technical and legal support. And and the town and and contracting where we need to for engineers and environmental consultants. I think I think it's um it's making all the difference. I think we can get all these pieces done and and we have to now. Because the the these resources, it's a once in like three generation opportunity when these kinds of resources are available. Wouldn't normally be able to do this type of thing.
Okay, let's uh let's get a motion to approve the the exercise of the T L R lease option.
Still moved.
One second, man.
Main segment to approve the exercise of the T L I lease option and allow them to go forward. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor would say aye.
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 May, motion carries.
Yeah. Okay, sure.
You want to stick around too, if you want me, but you're not, they're gonna get invited into the.
Thank you very much. My wife is waiting for me.
Yeah, we're used to stuff like that. Uh let's go to item five, which is a settlement funding request for outreach representative proposal. Yes, I'll let Scott take this one.
So if you guys remember, we did apply for opioid settlement funds and we did receive one payment. And now I just got notification, we're going to be receiving a second payment, which I included in your packet here. So we're gonna receive the second payment of another seventeen hundred dollars. So we'll roughly have, I believe, about thirty.
Thirty-four, was the first one seventeen, something like that?
Yeah, so we'll have like thirty-five hundred, I think, when it's all settled on. From these two payments. And we had not really designated any use of funds. One of our cannabis. Informational sessions that we were working with, some of the folks from the recovery community were there and had mentioned that. They were looking at some outreach and so out of that conversation drew this proposal that you could see from Turning Point. That was looking to basically bring in a part-time person and try and. Do some some community work as well as I think also maybe reach out to some folks who might not be using their services. But could potentially use their services to help them with some of our our families that are struggling with addiction and recovery. So since we didn't have a designated use of the money, this is basically would cover that particular. This this request would cover that and if it's successful, there's also money that's coming to the village for the same settlement. And I would think that, you know, potentially if it's working, maybe they might want to extend that by reaching out to the village as well. As we go forward.
So anyone have any questions? We're wanting to do. They are requesting four thousand fifty dollars and currently, as Scott just said, we're even only receiving thirty-five hundred bucks, so. If that's the case, I I don't have an issue with free money we got from old loan settlements.
Yeah.
Just saying it's just this T P S organization, whether it's gonna put their efforts into something to do with drug addiction. Rather than just put some signs up and whatever. This this proposal doesn't really, it's too much detail of what they're gonna do, that's the thing.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
And there's no one here from that group to ask questions though.
Is this a group that's already set up here in town?
I think it's through Park Street over there.
Yeah, they're part of the parks, so.
The part of Park Place?
And what's Laura's organization's called?
Greater Falls Connections.
Greater Falls Connections, right.
So that's where the original conversation came from.
And do these people work with Laura's organization, Greater Falls Connections, or not?
That was my understanding, the part of that.
I think we'd want coordination between these two groups.
Sure.
And also, how do you measure the efficacy? Is there any way to measure the efficacy in this or?
No, I mean.
More people come in for services, is that how you measure it?
You're hoping that maybe the more awareness there is, that there might be more people that that use them before they're in crisis or before they're in, you know. Situations that we've had. Unfortunately, we've had people overdosing, we've had some severe impacts from these. From from this problem. So I think that's really part of what this this person would do. But if the board has an interest, I could certainly invite Laura and maybe a representative from the organization to just come and give you a brief presentation. Time is really not of the essence. This just grew out of that conversation that we had after the last presentation, so.
I I'd love to hear Laura's take on it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Great. I'll ask him to come and maybe come to us.
Is this something we want to take action on, or do you want to table it to hear from?
I'd I'd love to table it until Laura can.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, great. Yeah, it seems like a very central because it is an organization that's already working in community, but it would be nice to hear a little bit.
Yeah, that's why I said there's nobody here to explain the details of what they're gonna do with this, so I think you got a point there, right? Here.
Yeah, so I I did want to just speak to it a little bit. I think it's a good idea to table it because hearing from the organizations is good information to get out the community. But the Turning Point Centers, they're all around Vermont. They do more. Human scale attacking the problem work. So like they have recovery counselors that work directly with with addicts in recovery. To keep them in recovery or to help get there. Greater Files Connections works with the greater community to create supports, education around the same types of things. And they are both in Park's Place. They do have crossover. They work together tightly. And it would be, it would be great to get them here and and get it on back TV.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we find, see if we can get them into the first.
Yeah, see if I can get them at that first meeting.
Okay, that being said, let's move on to the last item and that would be the approved sixty-six Axon Street Brella. Application and engineer agreement that their information is in your packet.
Right, so we did speak briefly about this, I believe, at the tri-board meeting and I just made the board aware that there had been some. Preliminary subsurface work done and that that led to some follow-up work. As I put in your packet, there was one area of that subsurface investigation that came back that needs to be attended to. Given that. Property owners, what we would be doing is if you approve this contract with Weston and Sampson. They will, they will work with our application to the E C and then ultimately the Brella Program then gives us the ability to go after cleanup funds. So that we can come up with a plan to figure out what to do with that portion of the of the of the lot. And then ultimately go back to the folks that we were discussing the lease with. And see where the Bellas Falls trades incorporated folks to see where we stand after that with potentially pursuing a lease.
Is is Mike's Mike's stack's group that you just described, are they still interested in in?
Yes, they did the initial work as they were working on layouts and he brought that to my attention and.
And they're still like doing a planning and everything now.
Right, so the contamination that was.
We can just clear it up.
Which is. Yes, do we have any, you know, source of the contamination?
No, they didn't, they didn't give us a, they didn't give us a potential source.
It's not very deep, is it Scott?
No.
Only guy I can think of was thinking they're they're heating arrangement down there. They had a two-o tank or something to sell it. I don't think it's in that corner though.
It's more along the line of where it was paid is.
Yeah, that's why I wondered.
Right.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to approve the Brella Application and Engineer Agreement, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. That's what I heard Scott states. So there is that.
One second.
This is main segmented to approve the Brella Grant or an engineering agreement, excuse me, application and engineering agreement. Not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing them, all those in favor would say aye.
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 Although opposed, nay. Motion carries. Hey, review orders, bills and warrants. I have a few of them here. I'll take a motion. Motion to approve orders, bills and warrants. We're excited.
A second.
Which is made to to review and approve orders, bills and warrants. They will be coming around the centers. Does anyone have any questions?
I'd rather talk about.
Yeah.
The sale of the hydro plant has massive implications for the town. I understand that they paid almost twice what it's afraid it's worth.
Right, we've been working with a group that had worked with us previously on our our tax stabilization agreement. So they're sort of the experts in this entire area, so they're working on that.
Paul works with, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And so he's gonna update us when he has updated information because he'd asked for, they bought, I think, thirteen facilities up and down the Connecticut River. So he was more interested in just the specific valuation of the Bellas Falls plant within that purchase. And then once we get that detail, I can at least report that back to the board.
Could could Paul ever come in and talk to us about about the process and implications or is that more your role?
I think we'll do that as we get a little more involved. Now we have a new owner. We'll have to, you know, we were hoping to start those conversations over the winter and early spring. But we might delay it a bit. I don't know when the transaction will close and when the new owner will be fully.
That that could also affect our our bridge project.
It is affecting.
But what we heard from the V H B presentation has changed a little bit because now Bridge River Hydro says, hey, you don't want anything to do with it. So when it happens, it's gonna be on our pocket, so hopefully.
But what's Bridge River Hydro doesn't own it anymore?
Well, yeah, that's hopefully.
But it might just be. Only own subsidiary of Quebec Hydro. Just don't know how they're gonna structure it, so.
Yeah, they're gonna keep the same employees.
Right, but we'd like to see a change in some of that, you know, it makes a lot of sense to me that we can't coordinate this work, so we're gonna work on that.
Could there be any negotiation around that?
We're gonna see if there's a way we can leverage that with part of the sale because it does make sense.
Yeah, it's a. And also, how much would the per-free licensing come and affect on that?
I don't know.
So Scott mentioned to me earlier, so I maybe we could go after Burke and see if we can pull up something there, a whole gun to the head or something to make them do something. It makes all the sense in the world, they're gonna lower the water to, you know, level on the canal to to do something to the whole system, the bridge. Why aren't they fixing the canal walls at the same time?
They know they have.
Makes more sense.
Got a two and a half year window to coordinate it. This, it's a little silly, they don't can't make this happen, so.
Right.
And maybe it's tied to the purchase and sale, maybe they can't commit the capital and that's why.
Decide to back off too.
Yeah.
We'll find out, try to get that.
Signed, Rick's couple of bills coming around. So again, items for November first meeting. We will need an executive session to discuss union negotiation strategy, so. We usually do that before we get into sit down with the board and see what we can figure out, so. Hopefully the overall board's coming from where they want to go with it, so we'll discuss that then. Anyone else I might need? I know there's a couple of items that we could talk about, Scott, but we'll.
Yeah.
Items for the joint board meeting on November twenty-nine.
Yeah, we should have an update. I did speak with Josh about picking up some of the work that Ray was doing where they're hiring a. Title searcher, so I'm hoping to get an update on when that portion will be done on the properties that are still. Eligent and then a schedule of when that then go through the notice procedure and then ultimately taxes. We'll have that updated.
Okay, other business, I can. I got a couple. Just like to thank Bonnie for coming down to recycle and spend a few hours of fun time down there, watching things go on. We are gonna have to appoint a moderator to the town meeting, et cetera. We have that authority, our statute. Paul Obahoski was in, talked with Scott this morning. He's interested. If we appoint someone. They would run the meeting, but then they would also have to apply to run for the position that they so desired to take it for to be elected, so.
Are we gonna play a temporary?
Well, we, yeah, we can point a temporary enrollment, so when it comes up, we have to have an emergency town meeting if somebody wanted to. We got so much fun to be in. So, so I, Paul Obie was one, I had also thought of of Laurie Rowell. Some of this outside of Sacagawea. Attorney down in Barbor, so I think she did it once before.
Oh, from the history of the planning place, right?
So we can, we, I'm gonna call Laurie and see if she's interested. If not, Paul's will step up and cover us until we get, you know, some interest involved. So. Now, the fire study grant, we did have a meeting the other day and it looks like a bill just appropriated five thousand. And those of joint board just hit Amy, myself and her, Debbie got together and we all agreed we're gonna put ten in to do it. Well, evidently Sacagawea is now wafting after the meeting last night. They're not sure they want to count it because of the goal. So, yeah, I don't know where we go from here. I guess we're gonna decide that by the fourteenth and so hopefully we get some. Something going on there. I'm gonna ask Gary if we can apply for a grant and if anybody that we, well, gonna put the ten ten thousand in. To get the Gears addicted thirty thousand dollar figure. To do it, Scott has also gave us information on what Frylborough was doing for the study. Theirs was like thirty-eight thousand, but. for the study. Theirs is like thirty-eight thousand, but they're also studying the EMS
Right, the baby.
tied in, so we would be, this that's gonna come up sometime along term budget season. Scott's already warned me. We gotta figure out, do something with our situation here, so we'll be looking at that as well. So if that was the case, if we go to grant runs, if we get a grant, well, then we can reverse the 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 three entities that checked in. You know, we can go for a thirty thousand dollar grant, we get twenty, then everybody would smoke twenty after they, you know, so it wouldn't be a full ten thousand, but I think the study needs to be done.
Sacagawea feels that it's too expensive. They can't afford it. What what's
Well, that was a comment that was made by their rep at the meeting last night, that they're a small community and they shouldn't have to pay, you know, this other town to pick it all up. You know.
I I agreed to contribute before for the for the other
Well, before, if you remember, originally it started with Sacagawea coming up and they they had proposed a a grant process to USDA, which we're sitting here with open hands and not hearing anything.
Yeah.
So uh we don't know. We assume we're probably not gonna get it. Uh and that was uh about, what was it, five thousand? We were gonna do ten. I think the town's gonna in the building to do five, so that would cover a twenty thousand dollar grant.
Right.
But now I guess it's it's at a dead stand, so at this point, I think we have to need voters aboard to appropriate funds to our
Right, and the thirty-eight figures, Scott, that is sort of the going rate that we
It's just a basis.
Hearing on this fire study, you mentioned, I remember the joint board, you mentioned the thirty thousand dollar figure because we were talking about the point of grant that USDA do apply for, but we probably aren't gonna get. So if we apply for that grant and and we do get it, act successful, that would be reversible if we had a payoff front, we get the study started. I don't know how that works. I'm sure it's gonna happen.
Yeah, so it depends on uh when they award the grant at this uh pre-award authority. But generally, if we haven't heard anything and we start procurement on it, then it would not be eligible for reimbursement.
But if we appropriate the funding and then apply for another grant, figuring we weren't gonna get the other one that we applied for that started with Sacagawea, then how would that work? Would that I'm just trying to figure a way we can maybe like send that get it into the program.
Through USDA?
Sacagawea looks like they're kind of wafting on.
Oh, they are.
Yeah. Say they want the town to pick up the tab. So, uh you know, figure plots, I guess, maybe. I don't know if you wanna call it that, but.
Can you negotiate with the Peters of Chair, if the chair is like where with Sacagawea?
Well, Amy, Amy agreed with everybody to go ten, that's why I was driving, but they cut the board, who sent emails to me, said that they're all over, they don't know what they want to do. Then they represented, it was Matt Brennan, said something they Sacagawea should participate in, so.
They get money from Athens every every year.
Well, that was another point of contention that came up. We won't get on that.
That was an interesting meeting that.
They had a special meeting but with the Athens select board, so something must be going on there.
Well, they're negotiating a a thing and then, of course, Wade, as I was pertaining, that, you know, the town buys all the fire equipment and then Sacagawea covers Athens who pays nothing for their equipment, so we beat our equipment up so we ask them to replace. The town Rockingham taxpayers buy the equipment and they get free use of it in Athens, so they were figuring out like the town of Rockingham, when they approached a an accident scene on Ivy One or something, they were up up there for five, six, seven, eight hours.
Yeah.
They had come up with a number of two hundred fifty bucks an hour to charge the accident victims or accident perpetrators. If it's a tractor trailer, the crash or whatever, they go after the insurance company. We've been successful uh on on getting money back from the insurance company. So that was thrown on table last night about charging Athens for the use of the equipment.
Right.
And the the whole thing about I can over how much money they want to charge Athens coverage. I know Branson that one time, now this is five years ago. I was on fire station committee. They were talking thirty grand they were charged Athens to cover and New New Brook, which is New Fane, was in the same vicinity. Uh Chester just uh settled an agreement with Andover. And they just charged them like forty some odd thousand dollars to cover their fire.
So five thousand bucks for for Athens is
So, and well, it but the I think their intent was that they were trying to get that money so they could raise money to to bond for a new fire station, which really doesn't make a lot of sense if we don't do a study to find out if what's needed for a station out there. I mean, you know, I to me, it makes all the sense to go do a study and then then that's what, um they'd go forward from there, but
Right.
They've they're waffling at this point, so we don't know. That they they tonight, there there was supposed to be an executive session, I guess, to decide, throw out some options and stuff and see what they want to do and who knows where it's going.
Thanks for your work at represent us.
Trying to do something.
Provincial chess, maybe.
Yeah, uh yeah. The other thing that came up, uh I don't know how many could know, but Fred Bullock was elected or appointed by the Governor Scott in twenty-two official paperwork and all uh to this uh as a public member of the state infrastructure bank board. Now, I said, well, what the hell is that? Doesn't make any sense. So we went on the internet, we dug it all up and there is some information. What it is is it deals with infrastructure projects in the state. And it consists of representatives uh from, you know, the state representatives and county representatives, and then they have uh at-large public. And Fred was one of those and uh I don't know, if we're back several years ago, it's gonna be at least fifteen, twenty years ago. That Fred was very instrumental in getting one twenty-one upgraded, probably out to payment floor.
Yeah, we know that, right?
And uh I know Dick Stinkney was in on it, uh the whole thing, because we, I remember going to meetings in Vermont Academy up at the and I agree this whole thing out and Fred was very instrumental and he also belonged to Wyndham Regional.
Oh, really?
So he got a lot of stuff accomplished, but he's had a stroke and he can't go ahead with this. Uh so we need to try and find somebody who can, we don't want to lose that position because then if we don't get a rep from this area, that sure is how it's gonna get to somebody up north and we won't have any representation.
Right.
So we need to find somebody that's, I don't know how often they meet, doesn't tell you anything, I think. I mean, meet every year or just every so often when there's a project that's needed to be, I don't know what to think about it, so.
Did this Fred communicate? Can you talk to him and give a suggestion as to what?
Yeah, but unfortunately, he's the house he lives in there on one twenty-one is is being upgraded so he can come back and live there. Right now, he's living with his daughter down in Massachusetts, so I don't I don't have a phone number for him, so I can't really get hold. He just came out to the house and dropped his paperwork off, so beat around to get somebody to go on this, you know. So we would, we need to think about somebody that might be wanting to do that. If I can find out, like who's credit, if, you know, if they meet this every so often, maybe you know, once a year, maybe, yeah, once every three year, who knows? If we find out if it's not a huge time commitment, maybe somebody will be able to step up and
I might be interested, Peter.
And I don't even know where they meet. I would imagine you probably go to my page, you know, that's where they probably go.
Well, I'm on the regional.
Yeah. Yeah, they would, but you know, I just, I mean, I need to, like, give you the backup information.
Yeah, that's true.
This is the, there's a statute here and uh also the infrastructure bank information tells you what they do.
Yeah, can I have it?
Yeah, yeah, get that. And then I'll see if I can find out in the meantime. Uh I'm sure you're on, you're here and there, uh kind of to find out, like, find out uh how often they meet if it's every other year, whatever, then uh it's not a time-consuming project.
Yeah.
Got to be there every six months or every three months or whatever, so.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for kind of stepping up to the plate here, you know, not going to get this up, you don't want to get involved, so. Those are all the fun stuff. Okay, Rick, you have anything? No, okay. Uh I guess now at this point, I would take a motion to go into executive session for a legal matter. That would put the town in a substantial disadvantage.
I'd love if we go into executive session. That's a legal matter.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, motion's made. Wait a second. Same as the main sector, going to executive sess- executive session for legal matters. Scott will be passing out some big board. There will be no announcements. It's just information to the board.
You invite Gary and I?
Thank you all, and and we will invite Gary in.